Hello, my name is Dan Phelps. I'm the Public Relations Coordinator for Neshoba Valley Technical High School. We are here in the lovely studios at Neshoba Tech in the TV media studio. And we are here to discuss the Neshoba Tech School Committee's recent initiative to increase accessibility to its meetings. I'm here with Dr. Denise Pigeon, the Superintendent of Neshoba Tech, and Chairman of the School Committee Charlie Ellis from the lovely town of Littleton.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan. Thank you.
Sure. Charlie, can you tell us a little about the initiative to increase the accessibility to the public?
Last year, when the school committee reorganized in April, a gentleman who represents the town of Chelmsford, Lawrence McDonald, requested that a subcommittee be formed to study how to do this, because this was a new concept for Neshoba Tech. And the committee was formed, it was Lawrence McDonald from Chelmsford, Warren Adam from Westford, who was an alternate school committee member, Dr. Pigeon, and myself. We met a couple of times, we did our research, we all had our areas that we had to look into, and throughout the meetings, there were a couple of things that kept coming to the surface. One was, how do we interconnect with eight towns, member towns, in our regional district? And each town had different carriers, you know, large companies that supply internet and TV access. And then each town had their own town cable station. So exponentially, it started to grow. We started to look at the equipment we would need to be able to coordinate all that. And then, the other overriding thing that always comes to the surface when we discuss during a project at Neshoba Tech is student involvement. We like to get all the students involved in any vocation or any technical area that we have to support the efforts of the school, on-the-job training, so to speak. After a lot of deliberation, we came to the forefront that the best way to do this is to start off in baby steps. We wanted to keep our name and our brand as coefficient as we could. We've worked hard on having that brand name put out there, this is what Neshoba Tech does, this is how we operate. So, keeping all that in mind, we came back before the committee and did a presentation, and the committee decided to go forward with the baby-step approach. And the baby-step approach is to, this year, try to tape three different meetings that we felt were important. The first one is the report of the treasurer and our auditor. The second one will be our breakfast meeting, where all the town officials are invited to listen to our new budget proposal for the year. And the last one would be where the school committee, in open session, votes the budget. And each one would be separately taped and put out at the appropriate times. One of the interesting facts that came out of all this work that we did as a subcommittee was a software platform out there called Board Docs. And that really opened our eyes to a lot of things. It gave us the ability to go beyond the scope of what we thought we could do, even with being able to tape and present to our member towns. This gives us live time with them every time we have a meeting. Dr. Pigeon's more of the professional on this part of it than I am. All of this is in conjunction with moving forward in an open and transparent environment. And part of that is how we built the budget, how we administer our funds, and how we work as a committee with our administration team to ensure that everything is done properly. Two of the key points that you want to think about when you watch this program that's going to follow immediately after this is the auditor's presentation about our accounting methods and procedures, which is mandated by the state, we have to do that. And then the follow-up behind that is our treasurer's report on the state of our stabilization fund, as well as our OPEP fund. And the reason I talk about that is because what this brings us to is the point of our credit rating is now a double A. And this is a huge impact on any town in our district. If they go to borrow money, Neshoba Tech is looked at as an asset, and that really increases their borrowing power. And that's the way it should be, and we worked very hard to get there. So, we have a great administrative staff that's helped us do that.
And then folks will be able to see these portions of the meeting-
Absolutely.
-following this presentation.
Absolutely.
Dr. Pigeon, as Charlie said, you might be a little more informed on the background of Board Docs and what that allows the committee to do. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. One of the running jokes that we have in the office is, have I told you today how much I love Board Docs?[348.53][348.53](Laughter) We run around and we talk about how much we do love the software, because it really has changed all of the work that's been done in the background in terms of preparing for meetings, posting for meetings, and housing all of our historical records for the actions of the committee. So, we first learned about Board Docs when we went to the MAS-C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference, their annual conference. And we learned about this software package that was out there that actually had been endorsed by MAS-C as a sort of a best practice in terms of board governance. And essentially what it is, it's a software package that then ties to your website, and it allows you to do all of the work for preparing for a meeting. So, agenda creation, all of your materials and packets creation, minutes and taking the minutes and housing the minutes. And in the past, you know, it was a struggle to make sure that our website was easy to use, easy to find information on, and we knew we wanted to improve that process. And this software has really allowed us to do that. So, the platform itself is, it's beautiful, it's easy to use on our end, and it's also very transparent and easy to use on the public end as well. Some of the amazing features of it, in addition to just providing that information, there's what we've been referring to as a "go-live" feature, where when a meeting goes live or is called to order by the chairman, if there's a member of the public that can't come to Neshoba Tech, and it happens to be a meeting that we are not able to tape, they can log on to the website, and they can actually see the meeting live time. Not video, not audio, but they can see the agenda in action. And if there's a motion made on the floor during the meeting, and you're sitting at home, you would see the motion that's made, who made the motion, who seconded the motion, and then you actually see the actions of the committee by name.
In real time.
In real time, which is amazing. And we think that this has been a great feature that really allows more accessibility to those who maybe can't drive all the way to Neshoba Tech for our meetings.
Oh, who might just be interested in one, that's a, you know, portion of the meeting.
Absolutely, one particular vote or one action. In general, it's been, it's been great. It has saved, on our end in the office, it has saved so much time, which has also saved so much money in the long run in terms of preparation on our end. And then the other piece is really the housing of the historical records. Now, all of our records are in a format where they can be easily searched by the public, so if someone is interested in a particular topic, it's easy to search on that topic. When before, you would have to dig through just posted document after posted document.
And any member of the public can use this just by logging on to the website?
Yes. So, if they were to go to Neshoba's website today and click on "About Us," then they would click on "District School Committee," and it would redirect them over to our Board Docs website, where on the main page, it shows you the meetings that have been posted. So, any upcoming meeting, you can then click on the meeting and see the agenda and the attachments that are available. In addition to that, all of the historical information is there as well, if you want to look at past meetings or past minutes. And then we also use the platform to house some of our important records. So, our annual budget is posted online. The auditor's report that Chairman Ellis has recently spoken about, which you'll see the report on today, we have also posted it on the website. So, if somebody was interested in looking at the annual audit, it's available.
Interesting. Charlie, what's the future of this, of Board Docs and Neshoba Tech's use of it?
It's probably one of the greatest tools I've seen for a school committee or any municipality board. It allows us to post ahead of time. It allows members, we receive, you know, an email as soon as the meeting's posted, a week and a half ahead of time. And it allows the administrative team to continually post to the agenda, so that as the agenda builds, we can log in at night when we're sitting at home, after dinner, I've got time at lunch, I'll log in to see what's going on. And before, we used to get a packet in the mail, three days before the meeting. So, you'd have to cram, really cram, to get all this information and to really understand what was going on, because with eight member towns and 14 members on a school committee and eight alternates, A, that was a lot of paper we were pushing out the door in postage, and time to collate all that and put it into the postage. But more importantly, you know, with the new rules of open meeting laws, it's very difficult to bring a new item to the committee at the last minute. And sometimes, in real world, last-minute things do happen, and you've got to be able to react to them as a committee. And sometimes, it actually takes a vote to move it forward, because it's that critical. I think on my level, not dealing with the administrative end of it, but as a school committee member, it's fantastic. I know we're always posted in time, we're kept legal, the minutes are there for review, anyone can see them. So, we've met all the rules and regulations put forth by the Commonwealth as far as open meeting and access to our minutes. And the history of our minutes that are slowly being added over time, so there'll be a chronological record of all of our minutes as far back as we can go. It's a fantastic process.
Very interesting. Okay. Well, we hope you stay tuned to watch the aspects of the last few meetings that Charlie talked about, and we hope you use Board Docs to increase your accessibility to Neshoba Tech's school committee meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Meeting to order Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. This is the school committee meeting of Neshoba Valley Technical High School. Would you all please follow me in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome all the school committee members, the administrative staff, parents, special guests, students. We'll try to move the meeting along fairly quickly tonight. Joanna, I'd like to go into a roll call, please.
Mr. Prahm from Air?
Present.
Mr. Ayer from Chelmsford?
Here.
Mr. DeFrias, Chelmsford. Mr. McDonald from Chelmsford?
Here.
Mr. Fliss from Baton?
Here.
Mr. Ellis, Littleton?
Here.
Mr. Butler, Pepper?
Here.
Ms. Proctor, Pepper? Mr. Tang, Pepper?
Here.
Mr. Colberg, Shirley?
Here.
Ms. Chapman, Townsend?
Here.
Mr. Chapman, Townsend?
Here.
Mr. Menalopoulos, Westford?
Here.
Mr. DeShane, Westford?
Here.
Ms. Fontaine, Air? Ms. Carafellis, Chelmsford?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McAdigan, Rocky? Mr. Belburg, Littleton? Mr. Morgan, Pepper?
Here.
Ms. Clark, Shirley? And Mr. Adam, Westford?
Thank you. Are there any public comments on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to move into recognitions and achievements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. White's going to read off our student level, we did with a poll.
It is my pleasure to introduce Ms. Ashley Crosby of Littleton. Ashley Crosby is the daughter of Dave and Teresa Crosby. She is a senior in the cosmetology program. She's a freshman mentor and captain and outside hitter for the volleyball team. Through cosmetology, she frequently visits local nursing homes and assisted living facilities to do the hair and nails of elderly residents. She also works at a salon in Acton. She plans to attend Framingham State College to pursue a degree in business and then continue in the cosmetology field. Ashley was nominated by guidance counselor Jessica Lamond, who wrote, "Ashley is an excellent student and a positive addition to the Neshoba Tech community. She's a senior class officer who goes above and beyond. Recently, she had a big part in organizing the homecoming dance and made sure that all of her classmates were having a good time. She puts others before herself and is very kind. Ashley is a true role model for the younger students who look up to her." Cosmetology instructor Sheryl Lee Farren added that Ashley is "an amazing girl, kind, considerate, helpful, and overall a good Neshoba Tech citizen." And I just want to add that Ashley has just earned her cosmetology license.[926.23][926.23](Applause)
Do you want to introduce your parents? I know they said the names, but do you want my people to hear something?
Oh, yeah. This is my mom, Teresa Crosby, and this is my dad, Dana Crosby.[941.82][941.82](Applause) Littleton.[950.23][950.23](Laughter) And our other student of the month, Crystal Woodward from Air, was unable to attend this evening.
Thank you, Ms. White.
You're welcome.
Our athletes of the month are unable to attend as well tonight. I will continue to work with them to get them to come to the meetings, we won't give up on them. We do have some videos to show, it wasn't conducive down here, so next month, I'll play some videos. I do want to read our employee of the month, she's not here tonight, but the reason why she's not here, but first, let me read about Chef Carly Capraro. Carly Capraro is in her 70th year at Neshoba Tech Baking Chef Instructor for Culinary Arts. She was nominated by Assistant Dean James Creed, who nominated her for her work, both as a culinary teacher and for volunteering her time to organize and run the golf teams, recent fundraiser at the country club. But Carly, right now, is with our culinary and hospitality programs at the Boxer, I want to say it right, Boxer Regency, as they compete in the Middlesex, Taste of Middlesex County, which I think is a kind of a spin-off or mirroring what they do for the Neshoba Valley Chamber of Commerce event. So, they are there, I have some pictures, once again, next month, I'll share those pictures, they look great. We don't know the winners or losers yet, but as usual, we expect a W, but we'll see what happens. I will definitely report back to you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to move into the student representatives' report. You can move right up to the podium if you'd like.
Oh, wow.[1032.32][1032.32](Laughter)
No pressure.
No pressure, yeah. No pressure.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
How is everyone? Good?
Good, thank you.
It's cold, but it's fine. Okay. So, the recent events that we've had, the Fall Open House was extremely successful with hundreds of prospective students coming to see the school, which is always great. The senior class panorama was taken on Monday, October 15th, along with cap and gown measurements. The first AP English sessions took place on October 27th, and there was a 95% attendance rate, the highest attendance rate among our sending schools. Mr. Sullivan said that he felt confident in the presenter's abilities to provide the students with excellent lessons and an overall view of the AP test and skill requirements of the students. And on November 2nd, Neshoba Tech participated in the nation's student mock election. This increased the civil engagement among students, and it also provided them with an overall sense of a real-life practice that they're hopefully going to continue doing down the line. So, yeah.
Two of our upcoming events include the annual Friends of Neshoba Craft Fair, taking place on November 17th from 10:00 to 3:00. And on November 28th at 6:00, we have our financial aid and Mephanite that will be held here in the Performing Arts Center.
So, for community involvement, we had dental students raise money for Smile Train, which was a nonprofit organization that provides corrective surgery for kids who have cleft lips or palates. The first-ever Lego League competition will happen on December 1st from 9:00 AM to 4:00, which is going to be hosted by our engineering program. The Class of 2021 are doing a fundraiser for the Savers Drive that started on November 5th. The Class of 2022 is holding a canned food drive until November 21st. Job fairs are taking place November 13th and 15th at the Devens Common Center and the Radisson Hotel in Chelmsford. So, that looks, you know, exciting and appealing to anyone who's looking to go on co-op, looking to start getting employed, post-grads, everything like that. And Winter's Driver's Ed is going to be starting on January 2nd.
We have a lot of information in our athletics department, as our fall sports are coming to the end of their season. Girl soccer did make it to the playoffs. The football team is still currently playing in their state vocational tournament, which will hopefully get moved to Thursday, maybe, with the snow.
Oh.
Yeah. The, while boy soccer did have a successful season, they unfortunately did not make it to the playoffs. And cross-country placed second, James Kimball placed second overall in the state vocational championship. Mason St. Pierce was in third, and Robert Paris was in sixth. And James Kimball was selected as one of 60 of athletes out of 13,000 to represent the entire league at the MIAX, recognition breakfast for outstanding student athletes. And registration for winter sports is open on November 14th from 6:30 to 8:00, and the winter sports meeting will be held on that night as well.
For clubs and activities, Newspaper Club is hopefully getting out the first issue soon. Mr. Sullivan said that it'll probably be at the end of November, early December, so by the next meeting, we can say that it's been published. Graphics is going to be accepting all senior photos by November 21st. Yearbook Club has given out a payment deadline of January 25th. And the Viking Theater Club has announced that they are starting to sell tickets to their musical on December 6th, 7th, and 8th called Xanadu. And today, Mr. Nardi Williams told me that the Gay-Straight Alliance has had three meetings so far and continue to expand on its members. And in December, the club will attend a regional GSA meeting.
For academics, we have trimester one is coming to an end. Senior projects have all been started, and their letter of pens were due last week. National Honor Society members have been, officers have been selected, along with the National Technical Honor Society officers. And MCAS retesting dates are coming up, they're November 6th, November 13th, and November
For news and shops, culinary and hotel/restaurant management will be attending two competitions coming up in December. And banking and marketing are continuing fundraising efforts for their upcoming DECA competition. They'll be working with culinary and hotel/restaurant management on the Veterans Luncheon that's taking place on November 20th.
And that concludes our report for this month.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to move into the consent agenda. Mr. Donald Ayer from Chelmsford, our secretary.
Okay, at this, I'd like to, recommended action to move to approve the October 2018 accounts payable warrant reports in the amount of $814,756.24. And October 2018 payroll warrant reports in the amount of $670,867.05, for a total in warrant reports of $1,485,623.29.
Motion? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you, Maria. The motion carries. Like to move into action items now, which will be handled by Karen Chapman, our vice chair.
Item A, I move to approve the minutes of the October 9th, 2018 regular meeting of the school committee.
Motion's been made, second. We have a second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? We've all had enough time to read them. Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We have two abstentions.
Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
Don will beat me.
Don beat him.
Just want to, please, take the vote, and then mark your name. Who abstained?
Maria, and run.
So, your decision's been made. You're all set, Mr. Chairman?
Great, thank you. Karen?
It's accepted, it's after he presented?
Yes. Jeanne, would you please bring our guest?
At this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Richard Sullivan, who has completed our fourth shield and applies a copy supplement to space. Help with the poll.
Thank you for coming and visiting with us this evening.
Thank you for having me tonight. Appreciate it.
We've been waiting, anticipating this report, so...
Well, the good news is that I think we did this little discussion in March of last year, so I think we're way ahead of schedule, so I'm appreciative of. Tell you a little bit about myself, just so you know who I am. My name's Richard Sullivan, I'm one of the principal founding partners of Powers &amp; Sullivan. We've been in business for 29 years now. And our practice pretty much focuses on municipalities, school districts, quasi-governmental entities, like retirement systems. We've been focused on this for a very, very long time. To give a background of our client base, from municipalities, from like, say Springfield to Raleigh, Wellfleet to Agawam, and we probably do about 20 school districts, a number, this is one of the school districts we do, a number of you communities are part of. We also audit the town of Chelmsford, in terms of just letting you know, there's a direct relationship between us and them as it relates to this school. And I'm not sure how long we've been auditing, but we had about a five-year run, and then there was a three-year absence, and it's our second year since we've been rehired to come back. Is there anything else I can share with you before I move on?
No, that was great.
Okay, great. So, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through, I've got two pages of notes, and just kind of walk you through how we go about the audit. There's a lot to do, to be honest with you, in a short period of time. We break out the audit into two sections. We do some work in the spring, and we do some work at year-end. In the spring, we focus on things that aren't June 30 specific, meaning cash can't be reconciled because we're there in the spring. There's certain reconciliations that occur on a regular basis that can't be audited. So, we take a look at the budget, we look at the single audit if there is one, we look at what's called Gatsby 68, which is pension liabilities. We audit long-term debt because all the debt activities occur at the date. We also do some internal control testing, where we look at transactions like the revenue cycle, the payroll cycle, or the expenditure cycle. And we try to get all that done in the three to four days we spend out here in June. At year-end, we complete what we didn't get done in the first phase, and then we walk down the trial balance. Now, your balance sheet is really not that complicated. The two biggest assets you have are cash and fixed assets, capital assets, and the biggest liabilities you have are comp apps, your pension liability, OPEB liability. We do test for cutoff, which means we want to make sure that all the expenditures that should be incurred and reported in this fiscal year is reported in this fiscal year and not pushed off to the next year. But for the most part, that's the activity that related to your balance sheet. What I can share with you is that we are out here the week of August 6th. That's 37 days after June 30th, which means it's an incredibly fast close. Sometimes when books are closed on a very timely basis, you can overlook things. And what I can share with you, and I'll probably talk about it again, is that we didn't propose any adjustments as it relates to the audit, which is really what you want to hear. Because we also pay attention, not just to year-end, but what's been done contemporaneously throughout the year in terms of the reports that you're receiving. And there was no indication from the work we saw that the information we're receiving was incorrect, meaning that you're making the right decisions at the right time as the information's being presented to you. If I was in your shoes, that's something I'd want to have happen. Talked about the books being closed timely. Another thing about Jeanne and her office is they were very ready for us, what I call audit-ready. So, I probably said this, maybe I said it last time too, we kind of come in like the Marines, and we try to get things done as fast as possible and as efficiently as possible. Jeanne and her staff were focused, exhibited a sense of urgency, and were very responsive to all our audit inquiries. The info we received was complete, accurate, and timely. I want to share with you that as long as I've known, and had you fortunate enough to have you as a client, this has been a repetitive thing each and every year. We always come in with what we call professional skepticism. But you ask a few questions, you see how timely information's presented to you, and all of a sudden, the credibility builds. So, you know that you're working with a client who's got their fingers on the pulse of what's supposed to be happening. So, what do we audit? I talked about your balance sheet being pretty simple. Cash and investments, capital assets. $7.5 million in cash, $24.2 million in capital assets. Those are the two big eyes on the balance sheet for assets. We look at warrants payable, bonds payable, your OPEB liability, which I'll talk about in a little bit more, your pension and your comp apps. That's the essence of what we look at from a liability standpoint. The transaction classes that I mentioned, payroll, expenditure, and revenue, we select between 20 and 40 transactions to test and see if they're being properly- between twenty and forty transactions to test and see if the, they're being properly reported, properly recorded, properly authorized. None of our testing led us to believe that anything that you think is happening or should be happening as it relates to internal controls were jeopardized at all during this process. The budget is something that we do look at. It's called compliance with laws and regulations because there has to be a proper process of going about it. The good thing is your budget is fairly simple. It's only voted once and tends to be done in, in concrete because of the way the structure of the, of the district is. But we make sure it's right. Couple of other little things that we do is we take a look at encumbrances. Encumbrances are something that is an obligation, you create an obligation to pay, but doesn't get paid till after year-end. And the reason we look at this is that sometimes people are hiding money in there, and we didn't see anything like that at all, because it's a great way to, to make a budget look like it's not, there's nothing left over. Um, and I mentioned cutoff. We just wanna make sure that the expenses that are recorded in fiscal seven, uh, eighteen and also in fiscal nineteen are in the proper period. Again, all our testing didn't reveal anything that causes us concerns. So, I'm just gonna talk about the financial activity a little bit, but just give you the audit results. No audit adjustments required to the books, this is what you wanna hear. All your assets, liabilities, and revenues were reported accurately and in the proper spot. Your audit opinion is unmodified, which means it's a clean opinion and as good as you get. If you read our report, there's a lot of negative assurance in there, um, but it's the best way we talk, and we're basically saying, there's nothing for you to be concerned with as a governing board. And as I said earlier, no internal control issues to relate to you. Now, when I talk about the operations, I tend to focus on the budgetary aspect, because that's how you run the district. The financial statements have a full accrual part of it, a modified accrual part of it, and then in the back, they have the budgetary schedule, which is what I'm gonna focus on. When you put together the budget for FY eighteen, you anticipated using about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of E and D. You only used ninety-five thousand. Now, part of that was because you used about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of your, um, of your school choice to offset some expenditures, which made your, your E and D not get hit as high as it could have. Revenue was a little better than expected, and the usual culprit was due to Chapter Seventy, Medicaid reimbursement and interest income, which you do not budget. And expenses came in lower than budget, mostly because about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of school choice was offset against salaries, in the salaries, in the regular, um, instruction vocational instructional expenditures. So, the result, you ended up with a budgetary deficit of ninety-five thousand dollars. Last year, two thousand and seventeen, you had a deficit of sixty-one thousand dollars. So, in essence, both years kinda mirrored in terms of operation what they were. I, I thought there was something interesting to point out when I was doing my analytics is, um, your assessment barely went up half a percent. Um, you know, I'm not a member of community, but I pay attention to my assessments if I was, and I think that what that means is you know you have to use some reserves when you're making up for stuff. But your school choice is pretty healthy. You have a balance of about three point nine million dollars at the end of the year. It did go down, it went down, um, oh, I'm sorry, I can't remember the top, about five hundred thousand, um, but it's still a fairly healthy balance. Those are your two major funds, by the way. And then there's a whole bunch of other funds called non-major, where all your grants and revolving funds are, are handled. And I don't spend too much time on those because they're very straightforward. Uh, you get the grant money, you spend it, get more grant money, you spend it. Talk a little bit about capital asset activity. You spend three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in what we call above-the-threshold additions. You have a threshold of ten thousand dollars, it says anything over ten thousand dollars, we should consider capitalization. Did the auto body shop floor for a hundred and sixteen thousand? Jeanne conveyed to me in a very interesting way about the boiler replacement, and she knows more about boilers now than you would ever wanna know. And, um, you sit, do air conditioning, a lab table and dishwasher, or another seventy-six K. So, just to re, re, go back to what I said, no adjustments to the books, no issues with internal control. I'm happy to report that it was good cooperation with the staff. Overall, a good, clean audit as a auditor and also as a businessman. Federal awards, there's another report sometimes you get, it's for federal awards, you've had this before. But the district spent less than three-quarters of a million dollars in federal monies, which means you do not have to have a federal awards report. All you have is a two-pager, which talks about compliance with laws and regulations. There were no issues with that report. And finally, the management letter, as I reported, there's no new internal control issues to talk about. We had a note, a note from last year that says Gatsby seventy-five was gonna be implemented, it was. Um, we had a note about documentation of internal controls related to federal grants, that, that was rectified and taken care of. And we only have one new comment, it's more like informational. A few of our clients have gotten hit with cybersecurity issues, bitcoins and all that kinda stuff, which I don't really understand, but I know it can be expensive and also extremely disruptive to the operations. Um, we haven't noted any of our cybersecurity, the things you should consider, and if you haven't documented how you wanna approach it, consider doing so. Two hundred and fifty hours worth of work, what, ten minutes? So, is there any questions I can ask? Answer.
It appears you've been very thorough.
I'd like to think so. Um, you know, it, I'd like to think that because we do what we do, and unfortunately, the young woman who was also in charge of the audit, Katie Hickey, um, she's actually out of town on another job. I would add her to, hear her, hear her tonight, so that she maybe, uh, discuss something with you. But, um, like I said, this is, this is what we specialize in, we've decided that we like to do school districts, municipalities, Massachusetts governmental entities. And, um, by, by being able to focus on that, um, I may not be able to do, like I know Tim does, a lot of nonprofits. I probably can't do those, but I know how to do these, and we know what to look for. We know how to assess risk. We know how to, what the hot pots are. You know, every job that we go into, we have this whole risk assessment that takes about two hours to fill out. And when we do that risk assessment, it generates the audit programs that we're gonna need to get through with the audit. And it's very comprehensive. Uh, it's, it's, it's a software that's proprietary and, um, I, I mean, a lot of firms have it, but it's a, it does the job. And, um, I think, starting off with the planning, and the planning occurs all during the engagement, lets us be able to do what I, you refer to as a comprehensive job, and I thi, I'd like to think what we call a thorough job in terms of being peer review, report, um, being able to be, look for a peer review, because every three years, we have a, a firm come in, look at our work, and determine if we can still do this. It's kinda nerve-wracking. But by following the protocols that we've established for ourselves internally, as well as the ones that are established for us out externally, yeah, I think we do a thorough job.
Maria?
Um, can you go with the OPEB and the stabilization, Mr. Chairman?
The, well, your OPEB, sure, let me get my, that's treasurer's report.
Are you talking about the investments or the, um...
I'm looking at the...
Tim, that's under the treasurer's report.
Thank you.
Sheldon?
Yeah, just wanted to, um, to just, uh, give a few words in advance to our, our pension liability.
Well, your pension liability, it, it's actually, your OPEB liability is higher than your pension liability. Um, I'm just gonna flip to the page if you don't mind.
Page forty-one.
Thank you. No, I think it might be a little earlier than that. Yeah, it's page thirty-five. Um, your pension liability is better than it has been in the past. Middlesex County's been doing a better job of managing its money. Um, and what you have, if you look at, starting at page thirty-five, there's a list of all the information in here as it relates to your pension liability, which at year-end was three point five million dollars. Now, Middlesex represents a number of communities out there, and, um, what, what I can share with you, and I don't know if they voted to go up to two thousand and forty, I think they went short, shorter. But MGL requires pensions to be fully funded after a certain point in time. So, the way to talk about your pension liability is, I would like to present to you, is that it will get taken care of. I know that there was some issues with some of the way the investments, where we can return a few years back. I know there's been a, more of a, uh, a better improvement in that. Um, I think they're about fifty-six percent, uh, funded right now. And the goal is that no later than two thousand and forty, they have to be a hundred percent funded. Yeah, well, I think everybody is.
Any other questions, Rob, please?
Question on the, uh, the sector, uh, liability. So, your, your, your point is taken, is that we should have a policy or you, you should have, uh, insurance to offset the risk?
No, I think it'd be very difficult to get insurance. I'm not sure if Maya does that, but I do think you should have a policy, how you're gonna react. Make sure that your, your firewalls or whatever other things that you think are important in terms of preventing cybersecurity are in fact in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I wanna correct myself on one thing. At December of two thousand and seventeen, they were forty-nine percent funded, not fifty-six.
I wanna thank you for coming this evening. I am ecstatic about the report. This is excellent news for us. It validates all the work that our administrative team and Jeanne has done, but it also validates the work of the committee. And I really appreciate you for coming and sharing that information with us.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to move the treasurer's report up in the agenda?
Second. Motion to accept the report?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
I withdraw that.
We got a little ahead of ourselves, we're gonna clean it up right now. Uh, I would, uh, accept a motion to accept the report as given on our audit.
Second.
Move to accept the June thirtieth, twenty-eighteen audit as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, that was a great report. Well done.
No.
Uh, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion from the committee to move the treasurer's report, which is under seven B, to, uh, come into the play right now, so that we can get our treasurer in here, and hopefully he can get home, he's got an hour and a half drive, I take it.
I will make such a motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Jeanne?
Mr. Harrison, our treasurer, he comes in more to ask on a regular basis, and he's been, uh, helpful to me in business topics, and I appreciate you talking to him.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, my name's Tim Harrison, I'm your district treasurer. Probably about fifteen to twenty years ago, um, probably more like twenty years ago, um, Department of Education and the Department of Revenue required school districts to have an outside treasurer. It was a newly, newly created position. As such, I am appointed by the school committee, and I report directly to the school committee and not to the superintendent or the business office. So, I maintain a sense of independence. Um, I'm not sure of the exact number of years, but I think I've been your treasurer for about fifteen years, could be a little bit more, plus or minus. Uh, before that, I did the audit here, uh, for about five years. My full-time job is a partner in the accounting firm of Borgatti Harrison and Company. We also do municipal audits, a lot of nonprofit audits. We, we don't specialize in one thing as Powers and Sullivan, um, we do a lot of, a lot of everything. We got tax season coming up shortly with a new tax act, it'll be, it's gonna be very interesting. Um, so monthly, I provide the board with a recap of what went, went on with cash. Shows all the activity and all the bank accounts, um, all the interest earnings, all the transfers, the, the warrants paid, uh, deposits made, and an ending cash balance. I'm not here to discuss that, but I'm always, when I do come here, I, you know, we'll, we'll take questions, if anyone has any on, on the monthly reports. What I like to do is come here twice a year to, uh, do a couple of things. One is to show my face, again, to be here if there's any questions, um, and just to give an update mainly on the, um, two big investments, uh, that you've been undertaking in the last few years. One's the stabilization, and the other one is the OPEB trust. I'll start with the stabilization. Um, so you have a handout that just kinda gives a history of all the contributions that the board has voted as part of their budget, starting in two thousand and eleven, uh, all the way through this fiscal year. We made a, uh, there was a hundred thousand dollars that was put in on August sixth of two thousand and eighteen. Cumulative interest earnings to date, um, this is through September thirtieth. Uh, so as of September thirtieth, there's one, one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars in your stabilization fund. Under Mass General Law, stabilization has to be invested on a conservative basis. Uh, you really can't take much risk, you're limited to what companies you can invest in. And, uh, we use Bartholomew and Company to invest our money to make sure that we stay in compliance with the legal investments. And, um, so, so far, there's been seventy thousand in investment earnings. And that, that account right now is, is been, is kept at, um, below five. So I've been putting it in a CD and keeping that relationship because they've been good to us, they, you've got the, uh, the bank here. So, I leave that money with them. All our, every money we have is invested with Santana Bank. Santana's been very good to the district this past year. All of our money was moved out of the local, uh, control of it was moved out of the local branch, and it's now managed in Boston by their, their government banking division, their municipal division. And by doing that, they monitor our account to make sure that when they have, internally they have rate increases, we're getting the highest rate that they can offer us. At the same time, the money is fully collateralized. So, uh, you know, and, and other than a savings bank, your typical bank, you have FDIC insurance of two hundred and fifty thousand. We're covered above and beyond that with their collateralization. Uh, and the OPEB trust...
Tim? Can we, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I understand that it has to be invested in a conservative, uh, manner by law, but what is the rate of return, or the typical rate of return we're in, uh, getting?
I didn't bring the last quarter's, um, statement from Bartholomew. I don't know if Jeanne has it. I can certainly, I'll be here Monday morning, I can certainly gather that information and give it to Jeanne, and she can get it to you.
Thank you.
Um, it'll show you, um, what the...
We may have that, hang on just a second.
Uh, we, we did have a recent OPEB meeting, and we did post in board docs the, the last report from that meeting, so you do have access to that?
Did it have the stabilization there too?
No, just open.
Okay.
It was stabilization, I was asking about...
Yeah, she, she required about the stabilization. So that report, I'll, I'll copy just the pages that you'd be interested in, it'll show what our target is and what we've actually been getting.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tim.
The OPEB trust was created in, uh, either the end of two thousand and fourteen, we made our first contribution in January of two thousand and fifteen. We've made a few other contributions since then. Uh, this handout includes a contribution made in August of two thousand and eighteen of two hundred thousand, um, earnings through September thirtieth, and we have a balance in the OPEB of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand and forty-nine dollars. The OPEB trust committee meets twice a year, um, to have, uh, our investment company, again, Bartholomew and Company, to come in and review our investments, how we're doing. The, the OPEB is, does not have the same restrictions as the stabilization does. You're investing the OPEB money on a long-term perspective, um, so you're allowed to be more aggressive, and in fact, we have a moderate aggressive portfolio. We have to have a target, um, rate of return that will be consistent with what the actuaries use when they do the actuarial valuation. We can't invest the money at, in a one percent CD when we're saying in the, to the actuary, we're, we're anticipating getting four and a half percent. We have to be consistent with the actuary in that, and based on that information, that's just one of the assumptions that's made to come up with your, our OPEB liability, which is under Gatsby seventy-five, it's now in your financial statement, I don't know what that number is, um, but it shows up on your government-wide balance sheet, which your obligation is. The, the most recent report does show that we're doing well with our, our, our stock end of the investments and our cash end. We do have a market value decline in our bond portfolio, but, but that's okay, because those are, um, those are stated amounts that either, whether we hold it to maturity or if they're called early, we get the full value back. So if we have, for example, um, a fifty thousand dollar bond, a treasury bill or something, and right now the market value is forty-seven thousand, this report, this shows that we have a three thousand dollar fair market value loss, but we actually will get that back, we're guaranteed to get that back. It's not like a stock fund where if it goes down, there's no guarantee it's gonna go back up. Uh, most... Most likely, it does over a 10-year period with their bonds. So the portfolio at a snapshot may show that we have a decline, but we don't. So the important thing that was pointed out to us in our last meeting is we need to really focus on the rate of return and what are we actually getting in interest and dividends? That's an important thing, and not worry about the bond piece of it as the market value decline that will come back up when it's liquidated. And our investment company is investing in various, whether it's a CD or the bonds, on shorter maturities and staring at it. So as rates continue to go up, we're not locked in for a long term at a lower rate. We're able to turn it over and keep moving at the higher rates. So you'll, you'll see over time that our returns are going to get better. That's all I have about the OPEB.
I do have one question with the market down and the OPEB. We have a bond rating, and I believe it's double A. Is that a bond rating?
Double A plus.
Double A plus. And so because we have a double A plus bond rating, it means that when one of our member towns wants to borrow money, the Shobatech is looked at as an asset because of our bond rating, double A plus. So when the market does do a turn down and one of our investments takes a little hit, does that necessarily reflect in our bond rating?
On the OPEB, no. The most important thing about the OPEB is the fact that you have, you do have a funding mechanism. You are funding it, you are taking it seriously. That's, that's the most important criteria. They're not looking at the fluctuations. Stabilization, when, when you're looked at to see what your total surplus is, they look at your E and D, and they look at your stabilization, they put that together and say that's what your surplus is. So that's important to make sure we don't lose money on the stabilization side. But the way it's invested, there's, we're not subject to the bigs up and downs with the, in the market fluctuations.
Thank you. I know it's important to our member towns that we maintain that or attempt to maintain that at all times because it is a huge asset for them. Thank you.
And just as a side note, one of the things that was discussed at the last OPEB trust meeting was to start working on a funding policy. For example, you know, to try and maintain a certain minimum level of contributions each year in your budget, and then also to start trying to think about other revenue sources to be able to add to that during the year, whether it's, for example, you know, say a cell tower was put up on the property, and you dedicated the cell tower rentals to be, go to the OPEB trust. That's another way of getting more money into it, trying to find ways to get more money into this besides just a steady amount every year. And one of the things that a lot of communities are looking at long-term is in, say, 2040, when the, when the pension is, the past service cost for the pension is fully paid for, now you're only paying the current service costs, your assessment will go way down, and a lot of communities are saying, okay, well, that decrease in assessment will then go to the OPEB as a way all of a sudden to start really kickstarting that one.
Rob?
Yes, two questions regarding the, I know this is a different, the treasurer's report, but basically we have about $13 million in the liability, and then we have $753,000 funded right now. So in comparison to the other districts, you know, what's, is there a ratio, a standard ratio, what you want to be funding?
There are some that still to this date have not started funding. There are some that have, I think we may have one in the state that may be fully funded. Is it Wellesley? So, you know, it's all over the place. The most important thing is that you, you create the trust, you are putting money into it, you're taking it seriously. We have a committee that meets twice a year, and we talk about it and try and come up with additional ways to fund the trust.
And just so everybody's clear, that committee is made up of Tim, our businessman, Jeannie Savoy, superintendent, Dr. Pigeon, myself, the town administrator for the town of Chelmsford, and we have a finance committee member from Pepperell. So it's a pretty good representation, and I will say the meeting's a little robust. Enjoyable, though. Enjoyable. Al?
Tim, are we doing fine? I mean, getting to meet our goals, what we're doing now, because this is kind of like pet peeve of my own personal mind, because this is costing our children's children money if we're not careful. And this is, you know, keeping us up, you know, trying to maintain a head above water by saving this year as well after, really.
On the OPEB?
Yes.
I mean, $750,000 divided by $13 million is a very small percentage. So there's still a big piece that, yeah, that our children are going to have to address. But you are addressing it the best you can.
Karen?
Tim, is there a recommended percentage that we, of our budget that we put in stabilization?
The general rule of thumb is to try and maintain about 8% of your budget in the stabilization.
Thank you.
So in this past year, this fiscal year, you had a total of $300,000 that you divvied up between OPEB and stabilization. If that's a comfortable number, and if you've met your, you know, the 8% range on the stabilization, then I'd say move, you put the whole $300,000 into OPEB.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Tim, thank you very much. Very informative. Appreciate it. Good seeing everybody. Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I move to accept the treasurer's report for September 2018.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to accept the treasurer's report. Is there any discussion? Any debate? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions the motion carries. This is our first start of televising a meeting, and the committee picked this meeting because it tells the history of our accounting practices as well as our treasurer and his input on our stabilization and OPEB. In the future, the committee has decided to go forward and tape the meeting that we have in the morning, the breakfast meeting with all the selectmen, FinCom, school committee members, town managers, as a way of hoping to get the word out about how the Shobatech does their finances. And the last meeting that we'll be taping will be a portion of it when the school committee is presented with the finalized budget, and we vote in public to accept the budget. The committee has taken these actions because Townsend's a long way to have somebody come at night to listen to a school committee meeting, as well as parts of Chelmsford and Littleton and Westford, and everyone's very busy. But we still feel compelled to be open and inviting, and hopefully this will satisfy some of the needs of the people in the communities we represent. At this time, I'd like to call for recess. Thank you. We'll take a 10-minute recess.